Well, I just, I'm sorry, but I hesitate a little bit because since Commissioner Crandall's not here, you know, we're kind of like saying he said this and he doesn't have a chance to interject. I'm sure it's probably fine, but it's, uh, it just seems a little odd.
So which point?
I would rather not change the minutes saying that Commissioner Crandall said something without Commissioner Crandall being here or...
So then I think it would be...
Fair point.
So then a compromise could be that it was discussed without attribution to Commissioner Crandall, because we certainly have one of the members recollecting that that matter was discussed. I agree with the attribution to somebody that's not here, but...
Okay, so...
I could add it to this last sentence where I just put, after safety issues they may have, I could put, um, request notification of public hearing.
Is that acceptable for Mr. Smith?
The tenants' club members.
The last sentence, right. The last sentence of this.
Yeah, the reason that I'd like to see that in there is because that's not a typical notice.
Okay, we have a motion and, well, we have a correction. Do we have a motion to approve with corrections?
I'll make a motion to adopt the minutes of the adjourned regular meeting of the City of San Clemente Planning Commission from September 6, 2017, as amended.
Okay, I have a motion to let the second, I have a motion and a second by tally and a second by Commissioner Ruin. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Passes six, zero. Okay. For oral and written communication, members of the audience may address the commission on matters of public interest which pertain to the city and are not otherwise on our agenda this evening. If you wish to speak, please step forward to the microphone, state your name and city of residence, and make your presentation. Please limit your presentation to three minutes. Madam Secretary, do we have any cards for...
No.
Okay. We have no items on our consent calendar, so that will move to item eight on our agenda, which is public hearings. Public hearing process includes a staff presentation, a presentation by the applicant not to exceed ten minutes, and public testimony. To facilitate the meeting for all attendees, the public is asked to limit their individual presentations to three minutes. Following the closure of the public hearing, the planning commission will respond to questions raised during the hearing, discuss the issues, and act upon the matter by motion. In item 8A tonight is 163 Calle Redondell, cultural heritage permit 17035, the Weber residence. Mrs. Norwood, how are you tonight?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. For, um, we're going to take both items together, 8A and B. They're related and similar, so I'm going to make a presentation for both at the same time.
Is that acceptable to the planner?
Yeah.
Okay. Is it acceptable to the commission, but then we'll take A and B together?
This is a request to construct two single-family residences that abut an historic structure. These are separate items on the agenda. Before the purpose of presentation, I'll present both items as they are similar and related. These sites are located at 161 and 163 Calle Redondell in the residential low zoning district and coastal overlay zone. For the 163 Calle Redondell location, the applicant proposes a three-bedroom residence containing 2,298 square feet of living area on a 5,190-square-foot pie-shaped lot. The primary living level features an open floor plan with a 252-square-foot rear deck and stairway providing access to the backyard. 161 Calle Redondell is a 2,434-square-foot residence with three bedrooms. The primary living level would also feature an open floor plan with a 239-square-foot rear deck and stairway providing access to the backyard. The design of both residences incorporates Spanish colonial revival design elements including single-barrel tile roofing, recessed wood windows and doors, and solid wrought iron railing. Street-facing balconets, multiple windows, and other architectural details serve to provide architectural interest and an enhanced interface with the adjacent neighborhood. A cultural heritage permit is required because these lots abut a historic resource. The projects have been determined to be compatible with the historic resource and the surrounding neighborhood and consistent with the required findings for a cultural heritage permit. Surrounding properties are developed with one- and two-story single-family homes, a park, playground, and tennis courts. Both of the subject sites are steeply sloped and pie-shaped. These site characteristics, combined with the street curve of the lot, pose design challenges. The project originally contained requests for minor exception permits for reduced side yards, but that request was deleted. The applicant positioned both structures as close to the front as possible in order to comply with side yard setback requirements and reduce grading. The project meets all development standards. With regard to the historic resource, for context with the streetscape, only the garage and stairway of the historic resource are visible from street level due to topography, the location of the residence near the back of the lot, and dense landscaping. Both projects were reviewed by DRSC, and the applicant incorporated design changes as suggested. The proposed project improves the appearance of the site, neighborhood, and streetscape with high-quality architecture consistent with the city's design guidelines. Before I conclude, I would like to note that two standards of approval, standard conditions of approval relating to landscaping requirements have been added to the resolutions for these projects. Pages containing additional conditions are on your dais for review. Staff recommends that the planning commission approve both cultural heritage permits subject to conditions of approval contained in the associated resolutions. This concludes my presentation. I'm available for questions. The applicant is also in attendance this evening.
Are we, do we have any questions of staff at this time? Mr. Blackwell?
I do, yes, thank you. Is this something we can expect going forward, having these conditions, or I'm sorry, the landscape plans reviewed after planning commission and the staff level? Is this going to be something that's going to be ongoing?
Family?
Or is there any reason why we're not looking at the landscape design now, or why isn't part of the plan?
Um, I'm sorry, were the landscape plans reviewed by Pat Murphy prior to this?
No.
Okay, so, no, typically, we do look at that during the review process, but we did work with the applicant during the development of the plans and had them enhance the landscaping along that side, so we will work with Pat Murphy, the city's landscape architect, to ensure that that landscaping is done appropriately.
Okay. I would just like to see the landscape plans at this level, only because, you know, there may be times when there'd be a significant element included that is, you know, like a large tree of some sort that could really change the character of the whole project. So I think it'd be important in the future to, you know, have that here at this point so we can look at it. Thank you.
The primary plan has not been detailed in the revision, not at all.
It's just that we've got conditions here that are new, the discussion's, which is probably a safe route, but it would be good to see the final landscape plan here so we know what we're dealing with, you know, so we have the whole picture.
Here's Mr. Smith. Yeah, this might be a question for the architect. The, uh, the two houses look different, and I think that's a plus, but the plans are, like, identical almost. And they show in both plans two fireplaces, and yet with the elevation, I only see a chimney on 161. I don't see a chimney on 163, and I don't see on the elevations, you're not showing, the chimneys that would represent the fireplaces that are in the master bedroom. So I'm wondering if I'm missing something, or these drawings are missing something, or it's a different kind of fireplace. Can somebody answer that?
I'll defer to the applicant or his architect.
Would the applicant or applicant's architect care to address the...
Excuse me, Mr. Chair.
I'm sorry.
I did jump in a last second.
Yeah.
Yeah, one question. I'm not seeing on those landscaping plans, so I suspect the answer is no, but I noticed that there's some mature trees on the property, particularly in the back. There's some, so some palm trees. Is there any attempt to preserve those trees, or have there's been, do we know if those trees are healthy or diseased or anything like that and deserve...
I don't know. I will defer that to the architect applicant as well.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Good evening, good to see you again.
Good evening. My name's Jack Garland. I'm the architect of both homes. In regards to the, uh, the fireplaces, I believe all the fireplaces in there are, um, uh, they duck through the wall, so they don't require a chimney, because all the fireplaces now are gas-burning. So it's a through, a through-wall ducking, ducting, so it goes out, out behind the actual fireplace.
So the chimney on the 161 is ornament?
Well, we can actually, the ductwork can go up there, but on the other ones, we may not. So that could go up, yes.
Thank you.
I'd like to make one correction on the, on the presentation by the planner, that the conditional use permit was, that we originally were applying for was a front yard setback, not a side, a minor exception permit for a front yard setback and not a side yard. And actually, on the side yards on, um, on 163, the one that's adjacent to the historical house, we've provided an eight-foot side yard on that one.
That's correct.
And also, the minimum, we could have gone as three and a half feet due to the, um, the width of the lot, but we kept it at four feet, so we could have an overhang on it because of the certain building requirement codes for, for overhangs. Any other questions? Oh, we did provide a landscape plan. We did submit one, so I don't know why it hasn't been...
There was a ref, there was a ref.
Yeah, we, we have a rough image of it. And I, maybe, I don't know if you can answer my question or not with some, I know there's a lot of foliage up there. I'm sure a lot of it will be going away, but I did see some, what looked like mature trees towards the back of the property in particular. Is there any attempt made to preserve those? Do we know if they are healthy enough to be preserved, you know, that sort of thing?
Yeah, I don't know at this point, and, um, because we have, like, three properties that kind of converge in the back, it's kind of hard to determine what lot those trees are, at least from going out there and looking at the lot.
Okay.
I might add, there really are no mature trees in them.
My name's Gary Weber, and I'm the applicant, and there are no mature trees that are in decent shape. There was a pepper tree at one point in time when we brought the lot. It died. It was in the way back. There is a Norfolk pine tree, I think, on the Ole Hanson existing house.
Correct.
Which will remain there, but the other lots have virtually nothing but cactus and dead shrubbery, which you'd be happy to see gone, I suspect.
Okay. Uh, Jack, one more question. You said you're, you're asking for a, not a side yard setback exception, but a what? A front?
We were asking for the reduced front yard setback, um...
Which property?
On both, actually. We were, but, but we withdrew that.
Yeah, I know. That's why I was confused why you made the statement, because I know the designer, you requested it, and you moved it back, and of course, our staff briefing both properties complied.
Just because the planner had said that it was a side yard setback, not a front yard setback.
All right, so we're, we're fine. We're all on the same sheet of music.
Right.
Any other questions of the architect? Mr. Smith?
Yeah, I'm just kind of curious. I noticed on the site plan that there's a access that goes to the side of these two homes, and it goes up to the top of the hill, and I'm assuming is that an easement or an access for the historical house?
Uh, that is an access easement, and maybe Gary Weber, the owner, might be able to describe that.
That provides the historic subject access to their casita in the back, right?
I believe so.
Um, it actually is an easement that the two properties that are adjacent to 161 have the right to use to deliver products. We had a little bit of an issue at some point in time, but it's a 10-foot easement, and it has, it has historically been used to provide access to a two-car garage, which is in the back of the Ole Hanson house.
Mm-hmm. Garage slash casita, whatever it is.
What's that?
It's referred to in the staff report as a casita back there, but it looks like a garage.
It's, it's a garage.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Any other question, Wu?
I have a question for the staff, or maybe the city attorney. For only condition 24, 24B on page 11 of the resolution, we asked the applicant to extend the sidewalk to the termination, terminating point in front of 165 to make the sidewalk continuous. That's certainly a good thing, because the sidewalk needs to be continued, continued, but my question is just, just because the applicant has, is the same owner of that historic property, we, is that a requirement of the municipal city? What, what's the reasoning behind that, and do we actually have that, um, legal reason to ask for that?
That was a condition of approval from the engineering department, who specifically worded the condition for the proposed projects, and awarded that accordingly.
So, so does the engineering department have the right to ask the property owner, even though they're the same property owner, but he's not doing anything to that property, to do something to that property?
I don't want to speak out of turn for the engineering department. I'm not familiar with all the requirements in the municipal code that refer to engineering. Maybe the city attorney can, but I do know that there are, that they're charged with completing our sidewalk system, but I'll defer to him.
I'm sure they want to complete it, but that seems somewhat overreaching.
Uh, yeah. Mr. Chairman, commissioners, the, whether or not the condition is overreaching really is a question for the applicant. If the applicant acquiesces to the condition, then it's permissible.
That's my next question.
So it's really a question for the applicant. I swear to God.
Yeah. Okay, that was going to be my next statement, was does the, has the applicant agreed with this? So, because, yeah, he owns the property.
Well, the question is whether or not we disagree that we were asked to put it in front of the Ole Hanson house, and we did not disagree with that request.
Okay.
It's not a big issue.
Okay, well, thank you.
But if you guys like to pay for it, we'd be happy to receive it.
We appreciate your helping out the neighborhood there and completing out the sidewalk there. That's great.
Well, you know, every third house should have a sidewalk, I think.
Particularly in that neighborhood, right?
Commissioner Smith, are you done, or you have more questions?
I got one more to staff. Um, the, uh, let's see. I forget now, I got sidetracked on that sidewalk issue.
Okay. Is there any other questions of staff or the applicant at this?
Now I remember, sorry. I was thinking about that sidewalk. It's interesting, because it jogs up past the driveway, so it's ADA compliant. It's interesting design. Is there any input from the owner of the historical house regarding this project that we should know about?
The owner was just up here.
The historical house.
Okay.
Yeah, Mr. Weber owns the historic home, correct, Mr. Weber?
Yeah, we own the two lots and the home.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
But I have to debate it myself.
Okay.
In other words, they're not going to regret the, the current area where a car's parked up there and all that stuff, because they don't have any problem with it. Okay. Uh, is there any other questions of the staff or applicant from the commission? If not, we'll close that part of the, and we'll open up the public hearing. I will note for the record that attachment four in our brief is a letter to design review from Mr. Larry Culbertson about the project 163 Calle Redondell, and so it was in our packages, and I'd like to cite that for the record. And we have just one card, and it's Mr. Larry Culbertson. Good evening, commissioners. Larry Culbertson, resident. Warms my heart that that letter actually found it into your packet tonight for a change. I have a question about the photo that was shown. The planner went over very rapidly about how overgrown the property was. The slide sort of flashed before my eyes. The picture that I was given at one of the design review meetings shows that house as being quite visible from the street. So is it possible, yeah. Amber, could you verify this? Is that the same property? Of course, it's the same property. Somebody let the, somebody let the foliage grow.
Yes, it's the same property.
How convenient.
I'll pass the picture around. It's the same property. It's different vantage points, just to point out, though. Neither are taken from the actual street, should be noted.
All right, thank you.
Do you mind if I see that picture?
Absolutely. Um, the, I believe that the project will have a negative impact on the adjacent historic resource. I don't agree with the arguments that were put forth in the design review packet. I believe they're the same that you see tonight with regard to the relevant design guidelines and consistency with the general plan policies. The, that analysis back in that report that went to design review stated, the analysis states the problem, well, I think that the analysis stated the problem quite accurately. The historic structure is sited significantly uphill from the front property line toward the back of the property. Because of this sighting and because of the shape of the property, of the project's site and curve of the street, it pushes the proposed structure forward on the project site. Massing impacts to the historic structure are exacerbated. Number two on that report, it said that the city design guidelines develop compatible relationship between building placement and existing open space of neighboring properties. Staff said the property, the project has been positioned toward the front of the site to maintain existing open space adjacent to the neighboring historic structure. That wasn't the reason at all. The reason the project was positioned forward was that the property is not wide enough at the back to build anything. Furthermore, the open space in, in front of the historic resource is not being respected. The, in your report tonight, on your page seven, the general plan consistency, number five, HP 2.06, we require, it's not request or guidelines, this is, we require that all new single-family residential development abutting historic resources be compatible with the historic resource in terms of scale, massing, building materials, and so on. These buildings far outmass the historic structure, and they're way forward of it. It's got to be 40 feet toward the street, so it puts that historic structure into a little tunnel, and it flies right in face of what the Secretary of Interior standards say that we're supposed to be doing. So please consider that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any more people tonight that would desire to make a public comment? Now I'll close the public comment, and we'll open it up in discussion. Do we have any discussion as far as the projects? Mr. Smith?
I just wanted to add for the record that the photo that was provided by Mr. Culbertson was included in the staff report that the planning commission received, so that was a part of your attachments. Then the applicant just wanted me to clarify that that, that both pictures are from a higher elevation than from actual street level.
They're all the way across the other side of the tenants' court.
Exactly. So probably in your site visits, you probably recognize that also. Thank you.
Extensive photographs are in the staff report, including backup in the back of the property. Okay, Commissioner Ruin?
Yeah, I'll start off. Would you mind going back to the slide with the rendering of the two units? Thanks. Just really, kind of a question for other commissioners. The, that second floor, actually, the first floor, that's directly above the garage, that proportion seems a little off to me. It seems a little, the appearance is a little squeezed as opposed to what you see on the third floor there. And maybe, maybe it's something for the architect to comment on as well, but I'm just wondering if anyone else, if anyone else sees that, if that's something that, that hits anyone.
You're talking about 163?
On both of them, actually. That, that middle row there, it just, it just seems like it's smaller than the third floor above it. If that's something that I'm...
I look at the, above the, where the kind of shed roof is there, and that makes, that actually is where I'm looking for the proportion, not to the base.
Yeah, above the shed roof on the side?
Yeah, above the door on, on 163.
Right.
Over there. So that...
Harvey, thank you.
But design review looked at this, right?
Yeah, but that's why I'm asking. I mean, maybe I'm, maybe I'm off-base. Maybe it's just me.
I think you get an appearance of compression just because of the roof above the garage a little bit compared to the actual floor itself is where I, I would think, but I think, I don't find it objectionable myself, but...
Okay. I just wanted to start with that question, because it's on the cut line.
Commissioner Wu?
Well, overall, I would support this project, and I was a part of a design review, and some of the discussion was about the request of a minor exception on the front setback, which is not in front of us anymore, because we believe it's not appropriate to grant that minor exception. So the applicant changed the design. Now, regarding to Larry's comment about the, the home needs to be set back much more, I'm afraid that if we set back by another 20 feet or so, it would render this triangle site unfeasible for development. So that's, so for that reason, I, I would say, you know, the current setback is appropriate. I like the design of 163 better than 161, because it takes, it takes care of, to some extent, the historic structure much better. 161 is almost a mirror of 163 with a little less desired, desired, um, design, but overall, it's, it's fine. I do want to echo with Commissioner...
Ruin?
No. Black, Blackwell's comment on that landscape plan. The landscape plan is very rudimental. On the legend, there's no, no graphic symbols. It's not a complete landscape plan. And I, as a general situation, we'd like to see a completed package, and we've observed that from time to time, the landscape plan is not available for design review, and this time is even more. It's not available for, for the planning commission. I think we're given the job to make a decision, and it's almost a final decision unless it's appealed, right? So we're given the job to make this final decision on a project approval, and we should have a completed package, unless there's a compelling, extraordinary situation. We would like to see a completed package.
Do you want to comment that, please, city planner?
Yeah, I, I'll just sincerely apologize that this wasn't done beforehand, and I completely agree with Commissioner Wu that this typically is vetted before it comes here and by our landscape architect. And I, we would defer to Pat Murphy. He is a long-running landscape architect and is very aware of the concerns of this community and how important it is, and so we will make sure that he will accept that.
Maybe we'll have some words in a conditional use thing to, to require that Mr. Murphy's fingerprints be put on the final landscape plan.
Yes.
That be amenable? Uh, any other? Oh, Mr. Blackwell.
Yes, thank you. Yes, I think that Mr. Culbertson's points are valid in terms of the recess of the historic structure. It'll be set back, and there's an existing structure at 167 Calle Redondell that is much closer to the front, to the street, and there will be a canyon effect. However, I think there was attention to the detail at 163. Those elements at the entry point have been set back. That portion of the architecture's been set back, so that you do have that release, that relief in line of sight to 165. Enough so that would be acceptable, given the physical constraints of the property in terms of the available setback area at the rear. I do, once again, want to state the importance of the landscape plan. Having that information here before us is very important, though I appreciate that we've got a, you know, a licensed architect on staff and that has been responsible and, and has, and has served the city well over the years. has, and has served the city well over the years. What I'm challenged with is that it's not in public forum. It is not, the information is not there for, for the residents to see through our review. So, it's absent and it gets reviewed by a single person without the privilege of, of others. So, I think, for that reason, I'd be comfortable with bringing it back if that's, if that is the, the wish of the commission. I'd also be comfortable having the landscape architect look at it at this point. But, in the future, I think I just wouldn't be comfortable...
I think the applicant's waited a long time. This thing started quite a while ago. You look at the audit trail on it to move it forward and maybe Mr. Murphy is, I think is, I consider him a city asset.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And so, under the conditions, I would broker a compromise and say, "We'll put words in there that make sure that the final landscaping plan is approved by the, our city landscape expert." How's that? It's already in there?
That we have...
Well, there was something new that we're about, we'll maintain it and all that stuff, but...
Number 27.
Okay.
All right, and that is outside of this forum. All right, that would be...
Well, I'll be, let's move, we'll be reviewed with the satisfaction of the city planner. I would just add maybe some words to, since she's a busy person, to have Mr. Murphy augment your, your work, your workflow there.
And I'll add, we won't be scrapping the landscape plan that is in your packet tonight. It will be off of that landscape plan. So, the public does have the opportunity to comment on that landscape plan tonight if somebody wanted to show up to discuss that tonight, too. But, again, I sincerely apologize. That's not something we like to do.
Commissioner Ruen's light on. You have another question or...
No, just comment on, on the, on the side. I, I did want to thank Larry again for his comments. I always appreciate his comments. I think he always kind of helps keep us honest and, you know, gives us a, gives us good perspective. I think in this particular case, you know, I've looked at this and I'm afraid to disagree. I think that both the garage at the bottom, the stairs going up, and even the fact that this is set far back on the bluff and the way that the 163 is going to be set up, I think you have to take all that into account with the massing. And so, even though the, the existing historic home is sort of perched on the top, I, you know, given the respect that the, of the setback that we're doing with the new house, I think it gives enough to the, to the historic property, in my opinion. It might be different if the historic property was set out front and, you know, there was no bluff there and it was sitting right next to it. That would probably be a different situation in my mind. But, but given how, the particular configuration of this and the difficulty of the site, those triangle sites can be very difficult, you know, I think that it's, you know, it's worth it to move forward.
I'll wrap up my comments. I think I agree with most of my fellow commissioners. I think I'd like to, also think the architect and the applicant took 163 and there's a side courtyard in the design that gives you a little more space between, on the right-hand side between it and the historic structure. When they reposition, there's a double floor, a little porch and courtyard out there on the right-hand side that gives the historic resource a little more breathing space. I know we've done some other approvals downtown where there was actually less space to work on and, you know, Michael Luna or Jack have put in a little side courtyard on, you know, down in the older parts of the town area that's, that we've, we've managed to agree that there's enough breathing room next to an historic structure. So, I think, given the size of the lots and what they have to deal with and this magical easement that was serving in many years ago, that it's the best compromise that you can put together, considering all the current requirements. So, I'll be supportive of the project. With that, I'll entertain a motion and with some wordings, I guess, for the landscape thing. Mr. Tally?
I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution number PC 17-026, a resolution that the Planning Commission of the City of San Clemente, California approving cultural heritage permit 17035 to Weber Residence, a request to allow the construction of a single-family residence located at 163 Calle Redondel with the addition to...
27?
Number 27, which is prior to issuance of a building permit, a landscape plan shall be reviewed and approved to subject to the satisfaction of the city planner and city landscape architect. So, adding the word "and" landscape architect at the end of the word planner.
I have a motion by Commissioner Tally. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second by...
A question.
Sorry, go ahead.
Are we going to do these together or are we going to do them separately?
We have to do these separately.
Okay. Well, I'll second it.
Okay.
Did, did we include condition number 28 in that motion?
It's included. I just amended 27.
Okay, I'm sorry. I thought, I just heard 27.
It's, it should be 27 and 28 because this is being added.
Okay, let's...
Oh, okay.
Let's add 27 and 28 to the motion then.
27 as amended and 28 as presented.
Okay. I have a motion by Commissioner Tally, a second by Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes 6-0.
Would you like another resolution?
Yes, we do. We need another resolution.
I would like to make a motion approving resolution number PC 17-027, a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of San Clemente, California approving cultural heritage permit 1709 for Weber Residence, a request to allow the construction of a single-family residence located at 161 Calle Redondel with the addition of, of condition number 27 and 28 and also to amend condition number 27 to add the words "and" landscape architect after the word "city planner."
Motion by Commissioner Tally, a second by Commissioner Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Passes 6-0.
One for us.
Good luck. With that, we'll proceed on to item C tonight, 225 Calle Pintoresco, conditional use permit 17-214, Gracie Barra. And with that, with the, okay, here we go.
Good evening, planning commissioners. My name is Eunice M. I'm the case planner for Gracie Barra Jitsu. And this request is for a conditional use permit to allow a commercial recreation use at 225 Calle Pintoresco. The subject property is located in the business park zone of the Rancho San Clemente specific plan. To the north of the property is the Avenida Lapada Street and the Bella Colina Golf Course. And to the south of the site is a dog care center and a warehouse. To the east of the site is a powder coating service and to the west is a vacant site. The site is also approximately 1,000 feet away from residential development. The single site is a single, the site is a single tenant building of 5,126 square feet and has 11 parking spaces. The facility consists of 3,956 square feet of training area and 1,170 square feet for an office, bathrooms, locker rooms, and a lobby area. There will be no changes to the exterior site and interior improvements will be minimal. Applicant proposes a group instruction for the site. Applicant proposes to have no more than 15 students and two instructors. Classes will be from 12:00 PM to 9:00 PM Monday through Friday, 8:30 AM to 11:30 AM Saturday and Sunday, and 10-minute intervals will be, will happen between classes and no amplified sounds are proposed. Project is consistent with the Rancho San Clemente Business Park and the use is compatible with surrounding properties and land uses. The project also conforms to the city's parking requirements as one space allows either two students or an instructor, allowing the site a maximum of two instructors and 18 students. This parking, this project will have minimal traffic, parking, and noise impact within surrounding area as business will also operate during off-hours, which will yield off-site parking. 10-minute break will occur between classes for each, for ease of traffic flow and all activities will be conducted indoors. Therefore, staff recommends that the Planning Commission approves conditional use permit 17-214, subject to conditions of approvals contained in the associated resolutions.
Okay.
This concludes staff presentation. I am available for any questions. The applicant is also attendance, in attendance this evening.
So, does the commission have any questions of staff at this time? Do we have any questions to the applicant or does the applicant desire to make a statement? Hmm? There's not. With that, we'll close, we'll close the applicant and we'll open the public hearing. Is there any cards, Madam Secretary?
No, sir.
Okay, we'll close, close the public hearing and enter into discussion.
Chairman, I do have a question to the applicant. Do you have a plan or desire to offer more classes or have more students at evening time or over the weekend?
Hello, folks. My name is Felipe. The question about the weekend, we only have classes on Saturdays and Sundays in the morning. So, Saturdays, the classes are 9 o'clock. We've got two classes only, parents and kids class in the morning, 9 to 10, and 10 to 11:30 and one adult class. And on Sunday, we have just one class from 9:15 to 10:45, just one single class. So, the Saturdays and Sundays.
I don't really have concern over that. The reason I ask you is that during evening time and weekend, there are less activities there and I personally would, but if you're not asking for it, then that's fine. I personally would be more accommodating to, to more number of students, et cetera, over the weekend if you want.
Yes.
That's just my individual opinion.
Yes.
Okay.
Do you have that a plan?
No.
No, okay.
I guess he wants to take some rest himself. Thank you. Is there any other questions? Okay, with that, we'll open up a discussion with the commission. May anybody have any comments or a motion?
Do you make a motion?
Mr. Smith?
Oh, I'm sorry, what? Just a, just a quick comment, maybe, maybe a request of staff in the future because I know, you know, we do these as a CUP, you know, and it's a good use here. Obviously, it serves the people who are going to work and, you know, having exercise place like this. But, we, as we see over the years, we've seen more and more exercises, places and churches and other things. It might be nice to get some sense of the park as a whole in terms of its occupancy rate and how many, how much, like industrial uses versus these sort of ancillary uses because, well, I don't have a problem with this, with this one at all. Over time, the purpose of the business park, it's there for, for jobs, for the, you know, to have like an industrial area. And it's just, just so we can keep an eye on the fact that, that the business park continues in the use for which it was planned and we don't, you know, end up sort of getting a, getting a critical mass of exercise places or something like that. So, so if we could get some, some picture of that when we get an application like this in the future, that, that might be nice and help us. But, otherwise, I...
Good spot for an economic development director. This been spot's been open for about 10 years. Okay, Commissioner Smith?
If there's no other discussion, I'd like to make a motion.
Please do.
I move that we approve resolution number PC 17-020, a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of San Clemente, California approving conditional use permit 17-214, Gracie Barra Jitsu, a request to allow a commercial recreation use with a group instructor for geo jitsu classes in the industrial building located at 225 Calle Pintoresco.
I would second, but I think you meant to state resolution number PC 17-029.
Oh, I made a mistake there.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, we stand corrected. We have a motion and...
And I'll second the corrected motion.
And the second, the corrected motion's been seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes 6-0. Good luck. That will move on to item nine, new business. And our highly acclaimed, world-famous traffic engineer will, will step to the fore. Thanks for coming, coming tonight, Larry. Appreciate your input. The sun comes up in the east, the tide changes every six, 20 hours and 20 minutes.
And I like traffic.
And Culberson will be, and Culberson will be back.
Yeah.
Okay. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, planning commissioners. My name's Tom Frank and I'm your transportation engineering manager. And it's my pleasure tonight to present the agenda report in front of you, the Calle Saluda striping project. And I'll give a brief presentation and be happy to answer any questions you have. The purpose of the agenda item is to review the striping plan that's associated with the resurfacing of a project which is underway. And the current schedule is Calle Saluda's scheduled to be resurfaced by December of this year. So, consistent with our general plan, whenever we're resurfacing our collector streets and our materials, we take that opportunity to evaluate the striping and the complete streets opportunities provided on each of those streets. And we look to see if we should reconfigure the striping to better serve all the users of the roadway. Calle Saluda is identified as a candidate Class II bike lane facility in the San Clemente Bike and Master Plan, and it's also a route to Vista Del Mar Elementary and Middle School. The project was designed in conformance with California Manual Uniform Traffic Control Device Guidelines, and the plan itself is presented in attachment two. And the benefits of the, of the revised striping include increasing the potential to help manage traffic speeds due to the increased perceived friction resulting from the elimination of the stripe median, in addition to some narrowing of the travel lanes. Right now, the, the travel lanes are excessively wide for collector street travel lanes. The second real benefit is improved environment and more room for bicyclists, actually putting in bike lanes. The third is improved site distance at all the intersections for all of the users. And then, the fourth is maintaining all of the existing traffic patterns, the turning lanes for both left turns and right turns. One that I didn't list in the agenda report, but another really large benefit to the city in implementing these complete streets and providing appropriate width vehicular travel lane widths is reducing long-term maintenance for the road pavement infrastructure because the greatest wear on the roadway is for those travel lanes. So, if you have excessively wide travel lanes, many times you have to grind and overlay that excessively wide travel lane. But, if you're narrowing the travel lanes to a more appropriate width, then when you have to resurface the roadways, many times you just have to grind and overlay that vehicular travel lane and you don't have to grind and overlay the additional areas that are not being traveled over.
Don't have to go all the way to the gutter.
Yeah, you don't have to go all the way to the gutter. So, there's quite a, I'm estimating it's over 10% reduction in long-term maintenance costs for the collector and arterial streets. And this project meeting was noticed to over 300 residents within a 300-foot radius of the project area. And to date, we haven't received any complaints to the restriping. We've received several compliments, but no complaints at this point. And that concludes my formal presentation. We are recommending that you provide a recommendation to city council to approve the project in conformance with MUTCD.
Yeah, I think I posed a question to you the other day. There's a, at one area here on the east end, as you enter into the Saluda from Toledo, where you like propose a may-use full lane signage there because of the width. And I asked you, and I think you said you'd be agreeable to putting actually charros on the road a little bit since the bicycles in that particular stretch there would have to take the lanes necessary.
That's right. There are a couple of minor revisions that we would likely do and that would be one of them. That's one we're considering, but that's what I'm going to recommend to our director of...
It seems to be more visible to me than some signs stuck on the side.
Yeah, yeah. It's like signs on the pavement.
I'd also like to comment, I, when I was up there, I went up there twice to kind of walk the turf. And I ran into five bicycles that were Two and Two and a Lone Ranger coming off a couple of the bike trails that merged onto this road. So, I kind of flagged them down and said, "What do you think about this plan?" And they were very, very enthusiastic about it as they came off the trails. Before, I talked to Two and Two around the west end, just coming off the trail intersects right near, off of Peak, not off of Pico, but I should say off of Lapada. There's a trail right there that comes on at the bottom near, right before you get to Cortez Almanza. And that's where I saw the Two and Two. to Courteza Elamanza, and that's where I saw the Two and Two. And there's another trail intersection down at the east end near where the park, that's where the other guy was coming off. So I'm sitting there with his racing doll hanging out and flagged him down and said, what do you think? And so they took the time to take a look at it, and they were very complimentary, so I thought I'd throw that out to the commission. Let's see, Mr. Tally, you were the first trigger light on, so...
Yes, sir. You know, my, my propensity to ask questions on, on traffic issues, so, so I travel this, I don't live in Talega, but I travel it, especially during the spring multiple times, because that's our path to the baseball fields from where I live. So this road appears to be a collector from the Talega, or to the Talega neighborhood, and also now out to the La Pata extension, right? How has the La Pata extension being opened impacted the use of this road, do you know?
We, I haven't studied the traffic counts because we haven't, yeah, I haven't seen the before and after, but from testimony from the neighborhood, I've heard it has gone up, which is understandable. So I believe, I don't, I can't give you the percentage, but I believe it has gone up.
Okay. And, and you know, one of my themes when we were talking about La Pata on the speed limit was that I believe that a successful, you know, egress to the city helps, you know, nullify a reason for, for a toll road. So I'm always kind of cautious about doing anything to impact the, this, you know, the applicability of people being able to get in and out of the city easily right there. Is there any plans to alter the speed limit once this is put in place?
No, no. And what I've seen from changing lane widths, it really doesn't have a dramatic impact on speed. We, one of our first lane revisions was, when I came on board, or a few, like a year after I came on board, was Camino de los Morris. And we went from pretty wide travel lanes, like over thirteen foot on the outside lane, to eleven foot and also ten and a half feet. And we didn't see any reduction in travel speeds on that roadway. I think, actually, you have to, if you've read some of the studies, which I'm guessing you did, I almost called you, actually.
Pumped a couple of them, too.
There's a lot of different factors.
I appreciate that.
Yeah, yeah. There's a lot of different factors that come into driver's behavior and, and speed switch drivers feel like they want to travel at. And lane width really isn't as much of a factor as road alignment and, and other factors. So like when we did Camino de los Morris, there used to be, at Nueva, there used to be a tighter hairpin turn. It was a kink in the road, actually. And although we reduced the travel lanes, we, we eliminated that kink. We made it a nice smooth radius. So by doing that, it actually, I think, increased the speed through that intersection, because when you have more abrupt and sharper radiuses, it tends to slow traffic down. If you have a smooth road, smooth wider, you know, easier traveled roadway, speeds tend to go up. So that coupled with, we've leveled out the roadway, we got rid of the dips, we got rid of some of the kinks, and I think that kind of offset any benefits which we would have received from slowing down slightly, and we didn't see any really speed reduction.
I think, because you're reconfiguring this road, you're gonna have, be required by, by law to actually do a traffic survey at the back end?
No, no, not at all, because we're really not reconfiguring it. We're, we're not doing a, a lane elimination, we're just basically implementing bike lanes. So it's not, it's negligible. We're not gonna do any speed survey.
So I don't, I'm not, I should not expect to see a, a proposed speed change on this street in the, in the future.
No, you should not.
You can fully charge your Tesla and make two-wheel wheelies all the way.
Well, I mean, so, so that's actually an interesting, an interesting point. Do you know when this street was built?
When Talega was built, so I heard it was around 2000, in that timeframe.
So that, I do appreciate the, the footnotes and the, and the sites that you gave there, which were, you know, 2000 and 2003. That's a long time ago, right?
Yeah.
So, so part of me wonders, a lot of things have changed in the last, you know, almost 20 years. You bring up a Tesla, you know, Level One, Level Two autonomous driving, right, have changed the way that humans interact with their vehicles and by virtue of that, the roadway. So I, it would be nice to see more recent, I guess, guidelines.
I completely agree with you.
So I don't know if they exist out there, but that would be, would be nice.
Probably some.
And I guess I wonder, you know, if that, that same vintage was when this road was built, so, so why did we ever build it in the first place like this?
Well, like I mentioned before, the previous road design standards from like World War II up until about 10 years ago were pretty, or were very auto-focused. They basically took the freeway design standards, which were 12-foot freeway design standards, you know, for, for radiuses and vertical deflection and everything, and put them on to arterial roadways. And then all of a sudden, you know, 15, 20 years later, the residents are going, why are people going so fast in the neighborhood?
See people that are built there and moved there.
Yeah, it was built as a 50 mile an hour roadway. So people, especially, you know, I'm, I'm on, online to get the poor man's Tesla, you know, that, it's coming out in the spring, and it's...
It's gonna be awesome.
And even, I was thinking about this, because when you're driving even in a 10-foot travel lane...
God help us, we'll have two Teslas talking to each other.
Yeah, when you're driving a 10-foot travel lane, I have a really, like, I have a Prius, and just the handling of all the cars there is so much better than the way it was in the 60s and the 50s. 10 feet seems more than adequate, even if you're in a duly large truck, like a full eight-foot wide vehicle.
It complements the Tesla quite well.
All right, and, and it can't wait, but...
Balance each other.
No, I wish there was more studies, and I think they, they hopefully will be coming.
Okay.
I'd like to see them.
They probably flogged it to death, and they could take themselves a 10-year Sebastian collection.
Well, I, I mean, I just, I wonder why wasn't the bike lane put in place there? And of course, the argument is the cars pay for the roads, the bikes, you know, don't pay taxes that go into the road.
I just think it was oversight.
Okay.
Yeah.
I, I support, I support what you're doing. I just, I wanted to ask some of those questions and make sure that we weren't gonna be, you know, shrinking and then slowing.
Yeah.
Okay. Commissioner Wu, you've been waiting patiently.
Thank you. So, so you, you will have another compliment that's, that will be from me, so, but I do have a question, a technical question, I hope you can educate me. If you look at the Via Catarina approaching toward, toward the east, that dash line allows the bicyclist and a car to weave. So if a bicyclist needs to make a left turn, they can weave to the, to that second lane, so to speak, and a car, if a car wants to make a right, they can weave to the third lane, which is the rightmost lane. That seemed to be appropriate. And then if you go to the intersection with Talega, if you can move to that page, it has a quite different configuration, where you have solid line separating the right turn lane and a left lane, left turn lane, with a bike lane in the, in between. The dash line is only about 100 feet. What's the speed limit on the street?
It's 40 miles per hour.
Forty miles, that's less than two seconds.
Right.
So a car needs to make the change, make, make the change. Now, a car doesn't have to, they can still cross the solid line, the bike lane, and get into the right turn, but most car drivers, they don't, they either don't know it, or they don't expect that, I guess. The bicyclist, same perception.
Yeah, I can, I can address that design standard. That's MUTCD when you're approaching an intersection that has a dedicated right-hand turn lane. So the purpose of, of that dedicated right-hand turn lane is obviously to separate and have a, a separate right-hand turn from the left-hand turn at this intersection. That bike lane is for the purpose of a bicyclist who's going to be going left on Avenue to Talega.
Right.
The bicyclists that are gonna be going right will actually take the right-hand turn lane.
Okay, I, I understand that.
And then, yeah.
But if the bicyclist is going to make a left, they're going to that lane, then the car needs to go to the right hand, right turn only. So there isn't much room for them to weave. The segment of weaving is pretty short. As I said, I understand that the cars, they can probably cross the bike lane, and that's a lot of by code, right, by vehicle, by vehicle code.
Yeah, we could actually.
But some people don't expect that. And so there, there may be some misjudgment, and maybe some confusion, which eventually will cause to some, what we call our right hook collision. And I know as a general rule, the, and the manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices would suggest a dash line approaching an intersection.
Right, that, well...
You'd have a, you have a dash line.
Actually, it recommends this configuration, and that's because they, they want to provide a separate bike lane for the bicyclist going left. So we did the same thing at Camino del Rio and, and La Pata, so you can experience it there. So what you do, it's exactly what you say, the drivers that are approaching this right-hand turn lane, some may cross over the bike lane a few feet short of that. We could actually dash it, you know, 50 feet in front of this, but the purpose is actually to just show them that a change is occurring, and that's why you have these dashes between the Class Two bike lane and then the separated bike lane approaching the intersection. It's just to notify them. Eventually, I think, there's some best management treatments that you've probably seen in other cities, like the green paint. We were looking at doing green dashes as these potentially high conflict areas, as we implement these change, or the new bike lane changes to these potentially high conflict areas, we're thinking of doing those green dashes, like you've probably seen in other cities. Right now, we're just strictly adhering to what's in the California Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices, but as soon as it's added, we'll likely do that to give more, more notice to the drivers that there's a change occurring and that you really have to take notice of this, of this area.
But for the dash line, there's a dash line between the first lane and the second lane, then there is a dash, then the lower dash line, is that even necessary?
It's not, it's not, it's actually optional. You could leave it off. We just put it in to try and highlight that conflict area.
Give it, give a segmentation.
Give the, give the vehicles a, a notice that they're, that they're, they're crossing over some kind of a pathway.
Okay.
So it is optional.
Okay.
And then we're also thinking of, with an MUTCD, if we wanted to add charos in there additionally, just to show that there's something different going on. Eventually, I think it's probably gonna be some green dashed paint, but we're not there yet.
But comparing to the typical design at Catarina, what's the benefit of this design provide?
At, at the other intersections, it's basically a striped, it's a shared area.
Right.
This is a dedicated right-hand turn lane, so there's, there's, there's not much difference, actually, the way it functions.
You got a little more...
I mean, we could, we could, we could have signed it the other way. It just doesn't provide a, a separated bike space for bicyclists which are going left. If you did it the other, if you did it just with this dash line, the bicyclists that would be going left, then they'd have to merge over and get into that left-hand turn lane.
Right, right.
This way, they can stay to the, to the right of the traffic, and then they can make their left-hand turn and merge into the bike lane that's on Avenue to Talega. So there's not much of a difference, but this is, what we have shown is the way that MUTD shows it in their design standard guidelines, and we didn't see a problem with it.
More safety.
Is there a, is it, is it fair to say, per, I mean, per what you're saying, is it fair to say that this is a more, an approach that would be more amenable to like a vehicular bicyclist?
Exactly, right, yeah.
Because I'm imagining someone like me, who's a little more tentative, you know, I would wanna, if I were going left on Talega at that point, I just wanna stay on the curb, let the cars turn right in front of me, and then cross the street.
It's probably actually more amenable to the recreational rider.
Really?
The vehicular rider, I think, would be in the left-hand turn lane.
Mm-hmm.
That's what I would think, like a Pete Van Nuys or something, they'd be sitting in the left-hand turn lane.
Bill Cameron.
But no, Bill was, Bill was more recreational. I'd be, I'd probably be on the sidewalk, but, yeah.
Okay. Is that your question, Mr. Ruin, or?
Uh, I, I did have one small comment, really, for staff. I think it's been a while since the commission has looked at the BPMP. Just, it might be a good idea for a study session at some point, because I know a couple of us went all through it, you know, like during...
Page by page.
Yeah, page by page, during the general plan, but it's been a while since we've had to look at it, so it might be good for people to have that context when they're looking at these sorts of things. Just an, just an idea.
Mr. Smith, you've been waiting patiently down there with others, people, questions.
Well, I was gonna ask the question about the speed limit, but then I heard it was 40 miles an hour. But I want to say that after driving this road and noticing there's no parking on either side, that I really admire this solution to put in a protected bike lane and provide a little bit slower traffic lanes, but still providing the turn lanes where they're necessary, where we don't have to waste the whole roadway with that double yellow dotted line. So I think it's a great fit. I really like it. Sometimes I'm somewhat skeptical about these, but I think this is a, a real winner. My final question to you is, how does this connect to the bike trail at the either ends that you mentioned, this Class Two? Are there other bike lanes that are gonna pick up on this? Can you tell us?
Yeah, that's, that's a good question. Yeah, there are bike lanes on both Avenue La Pata and on Avenue to Talega, and we're actually gonna improve, we're also gonna be resurfacing all of Avenue to Vista Hermosa in this next year, both partially with overlay and, and also slurry seal. And we'll be doing, essentially, well, actually, it's not the same treatment, but like we did on La Pata and parts of Avenue to Pico, we're gonna be reducing the travel lane to 11 foot, 10 and a half and 11 foot travel lanes, and implementing buffered bike lanes similar to this.
Are you gonna do that?
We're actually bidding a project on Avenue, on La Pata, from Saluda down to Pico, and Avenue to Pico from Frontera to Courtyards, which is where we left off our slurry seal the last project, and then also Avenue to Vista Hermosa from La Pata, all the way east, southeast to Avenue to Pico. We're bidding it like within the next couple of weeks, so it'll be done in about, this spring. And then we have quite a few other collector and arterial's on our program as well. So you're gonna be seeing more buffered bike lanes, no changes. Our objective, my objective, and I said, I'll, I'll say this time and time again, my objective as a traffic engineer is to provide safe and efficient travel for all the users. I first off recognize that 98% of the volume and users of the roadway are vehicles. I, you know, I'm focused on improving efficiency and safety for the vehicles, first of all, and then also looking to implement infrastructure for the other users as well, as opportunity exists.
And you're executing the bicycle master plan and the general plan at the same time, so it's...
Yeah, yeah, it's, I, yeah, there's...
As a newer commissioner, do they have a copy of the, of the BPMP when they get their, now Amber Brooks?
It is available online. I know Commissioner Tally's one that likes things online.
Yeah.
But under our long-range planning, it is listed on the website, so everybody has access to it.
Okay. I mean, some of us still carry the, the cthunker that we had when we went through it. We know that. Okay, Commissioner Blackwell, you've been waiting patiently.
Yes, yes, thank you. Tom, did you mention that there are further measures that can be implemented, not, not standard now, but further measures that could be implemented that would include charos and green painting, et cetera, that can make this an even safer environment for bicyclists?
Yeah, I did mention that, and the charos are actually MUTCD currently. The other treatment I was alluding to was you can either do solid green paint through those transition zones where you have the Class Two going, crossing a, a travel lane pathway typically at the intersections, to really highlight that potentially high conflict area. It's, it's not in California MUTCD right now, so we're, we're not proposing it at this time. We're trying to stay within that.
I remember a previous chair of the Planning Commission tried desperate, very hard to get green striping on parking lots, but, but the city engineer was not persuaded.
So that's why we did put the, at least the, the tick marks or the dashes going through that area, and, and we are considering putting charos there as well, just to really...
I think that would be very beneficial, a charo. That's an eye catcher, rather than some sign on the side of the road.
Right, yeah.
To make sure the bicycles take the lane for that first several hundred feet.
I think I agree with you, where people seem like they notice more of the legends on the roadway than they do the signs on the side of the road.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Blackwell, I interrupted.
Chair Brown, are we gonna get into discussion on this separately?
We are.
Or is it gonna be, okay, then I'll save my, the rest of my comments for this.
Okay, unless there's any more, any more questions of staff, I'll close that part of the hearing and open the public hearing. Is there any cards, or anybody? We'll close the public hearing, and we're into discussion. Mr. Blackwell?
Yes. Okay, well, I'm very happy to see this happening. This, this particular route is the connection between residential uses and a school and a pool. And during the school year, it's, it's the route that lots of kids take on their bicycles and walking, and it's become a Speedway alley. It is a cut through to La Pata, now that La Pata's connected, more and more people are using it, myself included. I have been using it... and more people are using it, myself included. I have been using it since the beginning, since we moved to the area, and I have noted that speeds are very high in the area, so I'm happy to see this. I think it's going to help a lot.
You haven't been run over by a Tesla lately, have you?
Well, you don't hear them coming, which is a scary part. They need, they need something. They need a button appearing in a certain area.
Sway bells.
You can hear my car. So I would like to see, this is a recommendation going to council. It could always be pared back, but I would like to see every precaution made to ensure the safety of the users of this route. I would like to see that. If it's just a color of paint, some extra striping, that seems pretty minor to ensure greater safety for the users. And there are plenty of users. Any of you have been out there? I'm sure you went to look at the area. Hopefully, you went out during school hours in the morning, and in the mid-afternoon when school gets out, you see a lot of little, little kids.
That school area has been one of the toughest schools we've had to deal with since the school district walked from their bus program with all the 50 cars that are parked on Avenue to Tegua in the afternoon and the morning, and the famous retired Sergeant Major lady that's the head crossing guard up there that takes no prisoners.
That's right.
That keeps good order and conduct at the intersections.
And I'll bet if she was here, she would agree that whatever we can do, if we can get more paint, more green paint, sharos, just do it all. And that would, I would love to see some support in there.
The only caution, I think, when he mentions the Manual for Controlled Vices Manual, when you follow that, and I don't know, our previous assistant city attorney has always emphasized the fact that that provides the city some liability protection when you follow it. In other words, you can't put a stop sign anywhere. The mayor's buddy wants it. And so, so when you follow that, whether things are warranted or not, so that's where you'll probably find him very cautious, or most councils very cautious. Once green goes into the manual, I'm sure we'll have a traffic engineer with a pink green paintbrush in his hand.
I understand.
One thing that I, was fed to me over the years of sitting up here, I don't know, maybe that's...
And that's valid. We are...
But I think he's agreeing with me over there, so.
We are crossing new territory. We're introducing new elements into our circulation plans such as traffic circles and narrowing of roads and et cetera. These are things that were not considered not too long ago. So since we're taking these big steps forward with our traffic design, when it comes to re-striping, that's a cheap and easy fix. Error on the side of caution for the many users of this area.
Commissioner Ruland, you have questions or a discussion here, I think?
Comment? Yeah, discussion. It's always nice to see new bike lanes whenever you do the striping. It's kind of fulfillment of all the stuff we talked about with the General Plan and the BPMP, or award-winning BPMP, actually. I have one concern here, and I'm always loath to question the technical work that our traffic engineer's done, but I keep looking at this, where we hit the end of Avenue to Tegua, as Commissioner Wu was pointing out, I see a car and a bike, they're crossing each other in the lanes, and the only advantage to that, it seems like, is when that bike is making a left-hand turn. If the bike makes a right-hand turn, they still have a car to their right, potentially, that they have to, you know, navigate through. So I'm wondering if it's worth that switch, and maybe we should just keep the bike on the right, and at least the bike doesn't have to worry about that right-hand turn car. So that's my only, you know, thing I'm struggling with.
Okay, and to address that issue, that would then lead to more of the right hook issue, because the car then is to the left of the bicyclist, so if the bicyclist is continuing on to make a left from that location, then the car going right would make the right hook. So that's actually the purpose of putting the bike lane to the left of that dedicated right-hand turn lane, is to try and eliminate the right hook.
So even though, so that's considered safer than having that cross?
It's considered safer, exactly, right.
And that's your professional, I mean, that's a professional opinion.
It's not just mine. That's why the METCD shows it in the guidelines, yeah. But I agree with it, yeah.
Just a minute. Mr. Tally had his light on, freeze, but wait patiently, and then I'll get to you.
So I just want to echo Commissioner Blackwell's comments, which is, and I'm sure you do this at all times, but to take as many measures as possible to try to highlight a safe environment there, especially because of the proximity to the school. The Model 3, by the way, will be able to tell you on a break for you, so you won't have to worry about that kind of crossing traffic.
Okay, good.
But I have to defer to what the manual recommends on that, as well as the professional engineers there. I can't opine about what might be right.
But I think we can certainly pass on to council a recommendation that they consider implementing as many measures as practical and consistent with good design guidelines as possible here, and maybe this is a place where they can experiment with introducing new elements that are consistent with the manual that have occurred.
Does the manual of Uniform Controlled Vices have an experimentation section to it allowing certain people?
Caltrans has a venue where you can apply for an experimental project, but this has been, the green paint has been done many times before. It's all over Tucson. It's in many California cities as well, so I'm sure you've seen it, actually. It's actually in Long Beach. They've painted lanes of green. So we just looked at this application. Actually, and I wanted to compliment you, the commissioner's comments are very valuable, not just to the policymakers like council, but also to my manager, the city engineer and director of public works, and the city manager, and all of the upper management. It's great to hear where the commission sits on issues like this. So I think the comments are very valuable, and yet I do look for opportunity to provide the safest infrastructure.
You always do that.
Yeah. So, but I wanted to just point out that the comments are very valuable to put in the minutes and carry on for many reasons. So I, we just, I think the green paint's coming. I understand the city engineer's position on why they wanted to keep consistent with the California METCD, and I really don't see that great of an increase in safety or value by adding the green paint in this one small location, because if I did, I'd probably really be fighting for it. I just don't see incrementally that it's going to be that big of an issue, so it's probably not worth the extra effort to go to the experimental state and then go through all that paperwork and bog the staff down.
He's a partner of one now. He lost his right-hand person.
Yeah, right, partner of one. Actually, it's one and a half. I'm only a half here. There's actually an assistant that's the one, I'm a half.
Keep life simple for him for a little while.
Yeah, that's right. Thank you, Chair. That's it in a nutshell, is keep it simple, and it's very safe and consistent with the guidelines.
Complement the engineer on his sidewalk expansion project in San Clemente, too.
Okay.
And help President. Mr. Wu, now you're up to patent.
Yeah, to continue the discussion about Mr. Ruland's idea, I think, among all the bicyclists, some will stay with a vehicle when they make a left at a Tegua. So have a dedicated bike lane is good, but do we still need eight feet? Because I'm looking at your right-turn-only lane, that's only 10 and a half. So having a car and a bike, side by side, is probably not the very safe way to make a right. So, but if you can take, you know, four to eight feet wide, left-turn-only bike lane, if you can take a few, a few feet from that, and then put it on the right, the right most, you know, the right lane, right-turn-only lane, make it 14 feet plus minus, that's typically, that can be shared by cars and bikes side by side, then maybe it will be safer for the bicyclist to make a right. It almost, if you have enough dimension, you can almost create another bike lane for the right turn.
They would. The purpose of making it eight feet is to actually give more buffer to the bicyclist. We're trying to make the right-hand turn vehicle push over towards the...
The curb.
The curb line, right, and that's to provide that buffer. So we could provide a six-foot wide bike lane, but then the vehicles might be two feet towards the center line and closer to the bicyclist. And what's going to happen, I think, most of the time is if a bike is going right, they're approaching the intersection, they're going to be in that same space, and the cars will yield to the bicyclist.
Take the lane.
They'll take the lane, and, yeah, they most, it would be very poor driver behavior to try and pass a bike in that 100-foot area.
Okay.
Not saying it wouldn't occur, but we don't want it to.
Okay, with that, let's, I see the lights are just about all out. We'll recommend us go forward with a resolution, or?
I'll make a motion that we forward to the city council a recommendation to approve re-striping calle Saluda, shown in the attachments, and with minor revisions as needed to conform with California Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices.
Motion by Commissioner Ruland, second by...
Second.
By Commissioner Wu. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes 6-0.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, we have no old business tonight. Reports of commissioners and staff, let's see, tentative of future agenda from the...
Just a reminder to staff that Commissioner Blackwell will be filling in for me at the DRSC on Wednesday.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
On the TFA, I just wanted to ask one quick question of the Planning Commission to kind of help staff with our future planning of different cases. And I just wanted to point out that the November 22 Planning Commission meeting happens to be the night before Thanksgiving.
That's my anniversary as well.
My anniversary's tonight, actually. Thank you for that opportunity.
Let's get her out of here.
Yes. So, happy anniversary. But I wanted to just bring that up because a lot of people are traveling during that time, and if we are thinking about closing that, I just want to give staff enough time to plan around that.
No, I think we can probably plan on taking a little relief. Council went dark in August, and we didn't, so I would...
Are we skipping it, then?
I would, she's asking us for feedback. If we need to take a motion or a sense, well, we'll certainly do that.
Do we need a motion?
Yeah.
No.
Move to the...
Then I'm in favor of skipping that Wednesday before Thanksgiving. I think we're...
I will make it to year '21.
Yeah.
I will not be here.
Okay, we're, basically, I think what the county, the commission's saying is the 11/22 meeting for the Planning Commission study session and maybe even the zoning administrator would, could, would, well, the commission, for what we have to do, I think we have consensus that we will cancel that meeting. I see, I noticed...
I don't have to miss it either, because I'll be gone.
I would note in, well, you're on that page, if you're looking at it, on the October 18th, we have appeals from Marblehead. No other items for this meeting in red on the schedule, so I'm sure we're going to lawyer up for that now. Please get a good night's sleep from the night before, if possible, from the City of Lake Forest. And then on the 8th of November, which is tentatively on the schedule here, is the Vista Montana Lifetime Fitness and Tennis Club, so it's kind of official. It's on the schedule, after all the study session questions we've been having lately. So we're proceeding there. There's a few items that are...
I will not be here until 10:04.
Wait a minute. On 10:04?
Yes.
But you will be here for the...
I will be here for the...
18.
I will be here for the...
I want some lawyer protection on this side of the dais. I want that lawyer. The last time was like four of them.
What is this up here about?
This is about the outlet mall signs.
No, this happens to be about banners, and there was an interpretation on a separate item also that happens to be on the signs themselves. So you'll be getting more information on those two appeals. There's actually two appeals coming forward.
Well, we had one that's about the sign. This one is different?
You did have one about the banners, and the applicant has appealed a separate portion of the banner code, yes.
Okay. I also would comment that from our chair of the Design Review Subcommittee, he felt the lawyer unprotected the last time that the outlet mall signs came up before Design Review, Design Review, and so we might have to discuss with him, providing some protection, if that comes forward. I think there was four of them in the Design Review Subcommittee meeting last time. So I know your legal bills are, budget is constrained, but from Commissioner Crandall, he's been talking to me about it, so I thought I'd relay it on to you. Any other reports of commissioners, commissions? Mr. Smith?
Yeah, I'd like to report on the last Postal Advisory Committee meeting, number 14. It focused on a lot about the Poche runoff issue, which is near and dear to my heart, my neighborhood, and everything else. And Cynthia Mallett wrote a memo to the committee outlining her move towards pushing this to the city council for a vote, and it's really orchestrated on three options to divert some of the runoff water into outflow pipes in Data Point or in sewer treatment places. And there's still a little bit more work to do because she's doing some options about whether or not that would be fully treated or partially treated or not treated at all water. Right now, Poche treats the runoff with sand filters, UV filters, and then is pumping it directly into the ocean right now. But the pond is still there, and that's still a problem, so we discussed that quickly. But this will be heading towards the city council in the future, and if anybody would like to see any of these reports, I could forward them, I guess, to you, Amber. And they're really technical. There's a lot of, you know, bacteria reports and things like that, but this is a very comprehensive report, and her memo, as well as the runoff study, is available. And so I'll send that to Amber, and if you want to pass this along. But they're starting to make very headway on clearing up the water quality there, so I'm very happy about that. We briefly talked about the city council approving the netting underneath the pier to keep the pigeons away, so I guess that's going to go forward a little bit. That's going to help.
Okay. Very good. Thank you very much. Any other reports? City planner? That, maybe I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Al will make the motion.
I move we adjourn the Planning Commission study to the Planning Commission study session to be held on 6:00 PM on October 4, 2017, in council chambers at City Hall, located at 100 Avenue to Presidio, San Clemente, California. Motion by Brown, second by Wu. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Passes 6-0. Meeting adjourned.
Meeting adjourned.